Hello, everyone. My name is Ken Shenacki and I am the Student Council President. And I wanted to thank all candidates for taking the time out of their busy schedule to answer questions from the students and the public. Thank you to Mark Warren for moderating the forum tonight. And thank you to the Art and Tech Department, Mr. Schoyer, Mr. Will, Mr. Henderson, Mr. Bergland, and Ms. Bremer. These people helped create the lovely signs in front of the candidates, and they also helped set up the technology all around us. Finally, I would like to thank you, the audience, for attending the School Board Forum. The School Board Forum has been a tradition at the Marshfield High School for a long time, and we are excited to see so much interest and a continuation of that tradition. Thanks again, everyone.
Thank you, and thanks to the candidates and all our audience members for being here. Also, we will have, well, eventually somewhat of an online presence. I want to thank Tom Laux and his crews from Marshfield Broadcasting, MFLD-TV.com. They are recording the forum, and this will be played back on Channel 989. And you can also find Marshfield Broadcasting on YouTube, and you will be able to watch the forum there. If you're not familiar, Marshfield Broadcasting is sort of a new entity. It sort of replaces the old, what you may have known as MCTV back in the day, Marshfield Community Television. It's now Marshfield Broadcasting. So we want to thank Tom and his staff for being here as well. Okay, so a few simple ground rules, and maybe just so that, yeah, the candidates have sort of been briefed, just so the audience knows what's going on. Each candidate gets three minutes to respond to questions. And we won't have any rebuttals, per se. In other words, we're not going to interrupt a question so somebody can have a rebuttal. If you want to have a rebuttal to anything any other candidate said, you can use your time, your response time from the next question, or in your closing statement, respond to anything anybody else may have said. We have six prepared questions. Couple of them are two-part questions, but at the end of those six questions, we will have time for audience questions. There's a microphone on a stand right over here to my left. So I guess just at the end of the six questions, I'll ask for audience questions. You can maybe form a line over there or something, or just come up one at a time. And after those questions are handled, each candidate will get three minutes for a closing statement, and that'll be that. Don't forget, the election is just around the corner. Next Tuesday is primary day, so we narrow the field down to four, and the polls open at 7:00 a.m. They close at 8:00 p.m. on Tuesday, February 15th. All right. Any questions? I don't see any, so we'll get started. The order's been predetermined here, so we're going to start at Dale and work our way down here to Rebecca. And then we'll mix the order up as we go through the questions. They already know that, but just so the audience is in on what we're up to. Is my timekeeper ready?
He's ready.
He's ready. All right, and thanks again to the Student Council for doing this. This is a great thing. All right, our first question, and we'll start with Dale Ukitis. First, why have you decided to run for the School Board? And what do you feel are your best qualifications for this position? And what are your personal connections to the district?
First of all, thanks to the Student Council for putting this on. I think this is a very worthwhile forum. There's a number-one question that I've been asked coming up to this election and this primary, and that question is usually followed by, "Are you nuts?" No way would I want to do that in today's environment. Well, my response is that I feel that this is a great community that does support education. I am proud of the people I work and collaborate with. My number-one reason for running is I still have a passion for education and how it's delivered to our students. My association with kids, parents, staff, and business leaders in this district has been very positive. I decided to run again because these are challenging times, and I think it's very important to have a person with my experience on the board to help sort out those solutions and challenges. Are we going into qualifications right away?
Yes.
Okay. This coming August will be 50 years in Marshfield for me. I was born in Marshfield, raised in the Fondleac area, coming back home here as a first-year teacher in 1972 out of UW-Oshkosh, and I have made Marshfield my home ever since. I've been a junior high and high school teacher, coach of different sports, high school journalism advisor, co-technology department director, publications PR director, which is a district administrator position, and I've been advisor for several Marshfield School District superintendents and past school board members. I'm the man behind the scenes in the passage of several of the referenda, including the one that built Madison and Washington schools while making improvements to our other schools. Last but not least, two, three-year terms as a current board member is part of my qualifications. I have experience at all levels of education in this district, and I would be pleased to serve again. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dale. I will repeat the questions, and as we go through, just so the candidates are familiar with them, so I'll repeat them. Our next candidate in the order up here at the table is Edie Adam. And Mr. Adam, if you could tell us why have you decided to run for the School Board? And what do you feel are your best qualifications for this position? And what are your personal connections to the district?
Thank you. I'm Edie Adam, and I'm happy to be here today, and thank you to the Student Council for putting this on. Why I'm running for School Board, three of my friends talked me into it, and they said that these are very challenging times, and they think that my qualifications and my background would be a very good fit for the School Board. I thought about it, and I thought, "I'll give it a shot." Let me tell you why I think I would be a good candidate for the School Board. From 1998 until 2019, I have been in the education, both as a teacher and also as an administrator, as a professor, as a department chair, as an associate dean and dean. I have experience in management. I have led boards, and my background as a scientist makes me want to use evidence-based decision-making in everything I do. Now, my connections to this district, to Marshfield, I moved there in 2003 to teach at the university here, and I have loved this city. It is my home now. When I first moved here, most people thought I was nuts where I was coming from, from Toronto to a small town in the middle of nowhere. At the time, it looked like it was a very bad decision, but over the last 20 years, I've come to love the city, and I, my wife and I have six children. Four of them are grown and out of the system. We have two kids in elementary school, and this district is one of the best in the state. We have the, we are the best teachers and the best programs, in my opinion, and I want to keep it that way. Another thing I can say is that when we look at this environment, this polarization, one of my strong strengths, my strong suits, is building bridges. I want us to take a step back from all the rhetoric and talk to each other, go to the core of the issues we want to deal with, and then find solutions. If I am lucky to be on the School Board, my three main issues are, is it good for students? Is it fiscal responsible? Is that the best that we can find by way of evidence? Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. So first, I am a mother of a 13-year-old boy who just started at the middle school. I have stepchildren who graduated from Marshfield High School and are very successful. I have, and have a stake in making sure that our school district not only properly and effectively educates our children, but also provides a safe environment and prepares our students to be the next leaders, both for college or technical school or to enter the workforce. Not everybody will go to college, not everybody will go to technical school. Some people will go right into the workforce, and we need to make sure that we're doing that. I am really proud to see the Student Council today and how amazing there are the insightful questions that they ask to really give the public an idea of who we are, what we believe, and who might be best to be on the School Board. So thank you so much. I love that Marshfield is educating our children well. Are there things that need to improve? I think so. Other parents perhaps think so, and maybe there are and maybe there aren't, but that's what I'd like to find out, and that's what I'd like to see. So some of my qualifications are, I moved to Marshfield in 1994 with my family. I immediately started going to law school. When I graduated from law school, I started working. I opened a business here in Marshfield. I was on the City Council of Marshfield for 13 years. I understand how boards work. I've been on numerous nonprofit boards in the community and in the area. And I believe that the responsibility of a School Board is threefold. One, they need to set the budget and how the budget works. Two, they need to set policy, and then that policy is carried out by the oversight that the Board has over the superintendent. So our job isn't to say, "You students need to do this," or "You students need to do that." Our job is to make sure that policies are set and then policies are carried forth, and I think that's really important, so that the public knows what the School Board's job and role is. So I love Marshfield. I have been involved and engaged in our community for over 20 years. I helped, when I was on Leadership Marshfield, I helped form Marshfield Young Professionals because I saw the brain drain that happened in our community. So basically, kids go off to college, and that's great. They should experience the world. I love that. Ooh, 30 seconds, huh? That was quick. And so I helped form Marshfield Young Professionals to give young, young professionals a reason to come back to Marshfield, to raise their kids in the safe and wonderful community we have of Marshfield. I love making sure children are successful and making sure that their best interests are a priority. As a family law attorney, as a guardian ad litem, I believe that's of foremost importance.
All right. Thank you, Lana. Our next candidate is Kathy G. Gorst. Kathy, why have you decided to run for the School Board? And what do you feel are your best qualifications for this position? And what are your personal connections to the district?
Good evening. I'm going to mix this up a little bit and let you know who I am first. I'm a parent and grandparent and successful business owner for over 39 years here in Marshfield. My grandchildren currently attend Marshfield High School and grade school in this school district. My daughter successfully graduated from Marshfield High School and achieved her dream in this community by becoming a business owner and entrepreneur. When she graduated, the school district was focused on educational goals, directed at educating students in math, the sciences, English, critical thinking, history and communication skills, and achieving excellence in those programs. It also pushed forward to become the number-one school in Wisconsin in 2012. I'm an attorney. I received my degree from UW-Madison Law School, my undergraduate degree in medical records administration, with minors in psychology and sociology from Viterbo College in La Crosse. My last job prior to attending law school, which was a while back, was with the University of Wisconsin-Madison Family Practice Residency Program, training residents and establishing family health centers in various Wisconsin communities, which included Eau Claire and Wausau. I have been involved with various boards, including the Wisconsin Board of Veterans Affairs, tasked as an advisory board to the governor, the Board of Directors of the Marshall Chamber of Commerce and Industry, the Wisconsin Law Foundation Board of Directors, and in addition, as an Army veteran, I have served in a volunteer capacity with the American Legion Department of Wisconsin on their finance, policy, and legislative committees, as well as acting as their legal advisor for approximately 15 years, and helping establish and teach classes in what we call the Legion College. I decided to run for School Board due to the declining performance of our district in meeting educational goals and maintaining the district standards, both statewide and nationally, as a first-class school district. I decided to run because we are experiencing loss of good teachers and staff in the district. Thank you for the 30. I decided to run because there's been an increase in drugs and violence in our schools. I've decided to run because due to the authoritarian approach adopted by the district, we have seen an impairment in the normal development and learning of our students to various degrees, and this approach has created an environment which exacerbated and fostered mental health issues in students. In addition, there's a lack of transparency, responsiveness, and accountability. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. We'll go to our fifth candidate, Rebecca Oliver, and we'll ask you those first questions. Why have you decided to run for the School Board? And what do you feel are your best qualifications for this position? And what are your personal connections to the district?
Hi. The reason that I ran for School Board is a lot of people talk about getting involved, that more people need to get involved in the communities and the local settings. Everybody's concerned with the national things that are going on and not so much with the local issues that are going on. I ran for School Board because I feel more people need to be involved, and I want to be able to help maintain a healthy and safe atmosphere for the students and to be sure students' and teachers' rights are heard and discussed. The lack of transparency is apparent here. The qualifications, I believe, that are important, as I raised eight children, I have 16 grandchildren, most of them in the school district, ranging from fourth grade through eighth grade. Two of my grandchildren have graduated this high school. I believe I can keep a cool head when there's problems present themselves, and I don't anger very easily, so I'm able to discuss with people who are angry some of the issues that are going on, and I know that the value of listening to people. Listening to people, a lot of times, calms them down and lets them feel they're heard and feels important. I was raised here in Marshfield. I went to high school here in this school just a few years after it was built. I see many improvements that's happened and greatly enjoy them, and I think they're very beneficial, but I think we have a lot of problems to deal with coming up in the future with the way society is, just in general, is going, and I think I have a few answers for some of those problems.
All right. Thank you. We will move on to our second of the six prepared questions, and Mr. Adam, you'll go first. And so our second question is, what are some of the challenges you may encounter being a School Board member, and how would you overcome these challenges? Edie?
Thank you. I've thought about this question a lot in the last few days, and I'm going to start by saying that by nature, I am a bridge builder. I like to talk to people from all walks of life, and one of the challenges I see going to School Board in this environment is there's a lot of people in different camps, and one of the challenges would be how to get people from different perspectives to work together. And I think that is one of the strengths I bring to the School Board if I'm elected. All my life, I have been somebody who likes to talk to people, bring people together, and then get at the core of the issue. So I think that's one challenge that I hope to overcome. The second challenge is time. I have a full-time job. My wife has a full-time job. We have six children, and we also have businesses in town. My wife and I own two businesses in town, so we are very busy people. But the School Board is a very important commitment, and I have made it a priority. My wife and I have talked about it, and we think it's important enough that will make time for me to serve on the Board. When I say time commitment, I mean time to be able to do the research, to be able to talk to people, meet constituents, meet students. When I don't do things halfway, when I'm going to do something, I do it, I do it well. And if I'm going to commit to the School Board, I'm going to commit my time to meeting people and talking to people, getting to know what their perspectives are, and going to the School Board with as much information as I can to be able to help solve the problems. Like I said before, I use three main, three main year stakes. One, is it good for students? Two, is it fiscal responsible? And three, is that the best decision we can make based on the available information? And I believe that if we do things right by talking to people across the different divides and bringing the best information forward, we can be able to overcome these challenges. Finally, I want to talk about the fact that our district is one of the best in the state. However, we have challenges. One of those challenges is the idea of communication. I believe we have a communication gap between the School Board and the public, the School Board and students, the School Board and parents, the School Board and our professional staff and support staff. And one of the things I want to talk about when I go to the School Board is to be able to have communication outlets where the School Board here, I believe we all care about the School Board and the students, and we should be able to talk more to our faculty, our students, and also the community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Lana, what are your, some of the challenges you may encounter being a School Board member? And how would you overcome these challenges?
Sure. I think there's a number of things. One, except for Mr. Ukitis, anyone who gets the second position on the School Board is going to be new. They're going to be a newbie. They're going to have to adapt to not only how the School Board works in its specific functions, but I certainly am a quick study. I've certainly been on numerous boards, numerous committees. I certainly know how boards function, and I would be excited to take on that challenge. Secondly, not knowing everything or enough. And so I believe that it's important, when setting policy, to talk to the stakeholders in there, the students, the administration, the teachers, the staff, parents. It requires learning about the problems and learning how we can help, how we can best make a policy that has the greatest impact. I also have a problem in wanting to do everything at once. Like, I see a bunch of problems, and I'm like, "I can fix that. I can do that right now." And so obviously, I think it takes a little bit of patience, takes a little bit of time to make changes that I think are certainly coming and certainly important. I believe that one of the challenges might be, as some of the candidates have said already, groupthink, in that it is interesting to me how people who disagree could be banded as complainers, could be banded as horrible public citizens. This isn't helpful, and this isn't right. We need to make sure that we're hearing from different perspectives. We need to be open to new ideas. We need to not lump all people in the same mold, and we need to stop polarizing and ostracizing different views. Next, I think students can be pawns in a cycle, and I think we need to break that cycle, and we need to make sure that students are the priority, student safety. Also, teacher and staff safety are a priority. Many priorities, many policies needs to happen. Also, I see the great things about Marshfield. I see the great things about school. My son just entered the middle school in seventh grade. It's awesome. I love talking to Vice Principal Fedrowski. I love his teachers. They are encouraging to my son. They are excited about what he can do. Thank you. 30 seconds. And finally, I think communication is really a challenge, and I don't, it's really interesting. We had a saying when I was on the School Board of NIMBY, N-I-M-B-Y, not in my backyard. If it doesn't affect me, I don't have much to say about it. And so parents certainly have a lot to say, administrators, teachers, students, but I think it does make a difference that we do effectively communicate. I appreciate the notices that go out by the superintendent. They are informative and important for me as a parent. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Lana. Kathy, you're up next. I'll ask you the questions. What are some of the challenges you may encounter being a School Board member? And how would you overcome those challenges?
Well, I believe that Ms. Fettig also addressed probably the first problem that a new person coming onto the Board is going to experience, which is getting up to speed and learning the functions and what needs to be done as a member of the School Board. However, like her, I'm a quick study, and I will have plenty of time. I am cutting back on my business. I have, I'm in partial retirement. I did do family law and guardian ad litem work, so I'm familiar with some of the issues that children face. I think probably the first thing that we need to do is focus on providing a safe environment for students, staff, and visitors into our school. We need to tackle the surge of violence and drugs within this school. I believe that we need to focus on education and to reverse the decline in our, in our standing in the, in education. We went in a nine-year period of time from being first in the state to being 55th and being 229th in the United States to being 1,936 in those national standings. That impacts the opportunities that are going to be available to our students, the educational advantages that they might have had had they been ranked higher in a, in a school that had higher standings, and it may affect their abilities to transition into better schools. So we have to look at that, and we need to focus on rebuilding that. We need to reengage parents as partners and business and community leaders and partners and students and teachers as partners with uniform goals. In dealing with the drugs and violence, I propose a better alliance and coordination with the city and surrounding communities and law enforcement agencies that encompass our school district. We need to have a cohesive and open alliance with parents to work, to engage them as part of any program. In addition, we need students and teachers to engage in the plan and be willing to stand up and push back. There should be a strict code of discipline, consequences for violations, and there should be no exceptions until we get things under control. I would have the district go back and look at what made our achievement of excellence possible and reset our focus to the basics that kept our district on top. If it means that we have to add staff and volunteers or have parents come into the school and be partners, then that's what we should do. We should go back to engaging the community and business leaders as well as prospective colleges.
All right. Thank you, Kathy. Rebecca, we'll move on to you with that question, two-part. What are some of the challenges you may encounter being a School Board member? And how would you overcome these challenges?
I've had a lot of people complaining to me, very angry people about things that have gone on in the Board, not being able to understand why they're making the decisions they make. It's just the lack of transparency. The biggest issue, I think, dealing with the School Board is having to deal with angry and frustrated people because of some of the and frustrated people because of some of the decisions that have to be made. There's always two or more sides to every topic, and someone's not going to be happy with the decisions. I would like to see an open communication forum for parents and the community that can give voice to what is frustrating and angering them. And then the board can respond, or someone on the board, liaison or whoever, and let them know why those decisions were made. Because a lot of times, the anger is gone if they understand the reasoning behind. I believe understanding each other goes a long way to resolving many issues. We need to have more transparency with the community.
All right. Thank you. Dale, you're up next for this question. Challenges you may encounter being a school board member? And how would you overcome these challenges?
Thanks, Mike. Well, first of all, there are many, but they're all part of what a typical school board member faces. It's what we have to do, and we try to do our best. The biggest challenge is making sure that whatever duty or decision I am involved in answers the question, is this good academically for kids? And I'm doing, excuse me, questions, actually. And am I doing what I can to provide a safe environment in which our students and staff come to work in every day? Finding a way to establish and balance a budget is always a big issue. I dreaded the years when we looked at possibly eliminating courses, athletic teams, extracurricular staff positions to make dollars that we have available fit into a budget. Fortunately, with the passage of our last referendum and the appreciative efforts of those in our community, the support education, some of that will be limited, or at least eliminated, by the passage of the last referendum. Looking for ways to recruit and retain staff right now is huge. I don't know if people also realize that other districts are out there, and it's sort of like being involved in the NBA or Major League Baseball these days, in that other school districts will try to raid some of your personnel by coming in and saying, hey, you know, if you come to our school district, we can offer you this. And they have such and such of a bonus that somehow they have come up with. So there's lots of reasons that people do leave. These are challenges that are primary to continue the, to offer quality classes and activities Marshfield has been known for. And here we go. Another big issue is trying to find a better way to communicate with the public, finding a way to let people understand what the duties of all board members are, and trying to bring people together to discuss differing opinions. How would I overcome these challenges? Here's some ideas that I've had, making sure that people know how to find the agendas and understand that all of our committee meetings are open to the public, trying to hold meetings that more people can attend, possibly changing some times, although people have to understand that our board members also have jobs, for the most part, most of them, not myself, I'm retired, I can go anytime. Possibly adding a parent or a community advisory group or ad hoc committees on decisions. Maybe adding those to some of the committee meetings, and that would help people understand how those decisions come about. Possibly sending out a publication to all district members, publications that answer questions that people might have overall. A report could include what goes on in committee meetings, listings of future committee meetings, accomplishments of students and staff, ideas on what improvements are being made or need to be made in our facilities, support student staff, and other things. I will say that when I was the PR director in the district, I had that duty. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dale. All right, we move on to question three. Alana, we'll start with you on this one. What would your personal approach be to promoting and advancing the academic and extracurricular programs offered by the Marshfield School District?
Thank you. With a son who's involved in basketball, I love our extracurricular activities. I love that even at the school board meeting yesterday, they talked about creating co-ops so that even more schools could be involved with that, and we could have more students involved. But as far as academics, children, I believe, children and students, I call you children, but truthfully, some of you are almost 18, and some of you are 18. Students need to know not just what to think, but how to think, how to learn how to think. And that's, and that's a lot of what school is. That's a lot of what post-secondary education is as well, is how am I going to learn? How am I going to study this to be the best that I can be? So while the school board's responsibility is policy, budget, and the superintendent, students need to be engaged to determine what academic and extracurricular programs they want to use to be engaged in, to be involved in. I think students should have the opportunity to have a wide variety of things that they can learn about, find out about, discover, in order to help them realistically determine what they want to do with the rest of their life. And it is the rest of your life. Whether it be you're in that field forever, whether it be you change fields in the middle, whether it be you go to school right out of high school, or you're not ready yet to decide what that is. You go when you're in your 40s, and you become, you have a career then. Too often, students, I think, are pushed into higher education without knowing what they want to do, and they waste years and thousands of dollars doing that. So I want to make sure that we are allowing students the opportunity to experience that wide variety of subjects. Students are our next leaders. They are. They're going to be leading all of us on cities, in states, in the country. They're going to be the ones doing it, and we need to make sure that they are prepared to do that. We need to definitely communicate to the public, to parents, to teachers and staff, to administrations, to students, to make sure that the goal and the vision and the mission, which I know we'll talk about in another question, is promoted and viewed in every single decision that's made. Students can be too busy in life, whether it be with the subjects they get involved in, whether it be work that they have to do or want to do, whether it be the extracurricular activities that they're involved in. And we need to make sure that students are encouraged and given the ability and the time to be excellent in everything that they do. And that's one of my goals on the school board. I think student excellence is a priority. And I know our school district attempts to do that, and I want to help make that better.
All right, thank you, Alana. We'll go to Kathy Gorst next. Kathy, what would your personal approach be to promoting and advancing the academic and extracurricular programs offered by the Marshfield School District?
Well, one of the things that I think we need to do is get back to engaging our communities, the communities that our students live in, and the business leaders, as well as prospective colleges, and in providing our students access to education and job forms. We need to involve our students, from freshmen to seniors at differing levels. There's a saying that all work and no play makes Jack a doll boy. Our students need to get back to having social activities and interactions with their peers. That's part of growing and maturing. You don't mature if you're isolated. We need to reengage. That will require rebuilding how our board and administration are perceived, and I would work to promote a plan that when there's a problem, that we engage parents and the community, that we be transparent. We tell them what happened, what consequences were applied, what steps we were going to take, future steps that we propose to take, long-term problems that involve parents and business leaders and community, and students and teachers as a team. This is not, this is not an individual effort. It's not a board effort. It's a community, and it's a team effort. And that's where we need to focus. In response to applying current and future curriculum and programs, I would not be afraid of change. I would be accessible to stakeholders. I would take the time to visit schools and classrooms and be willing to talk and listen to students and to listen to parents and teachers. I think that we should look at, I personally think that we should look at having implementation plans when we have new programs and curriculums and make sure the plan is outlined to parents, students, and teachers well in advance of implementing it, so they can be acquainted with the specifics of that plan and be able to ask questions, run a trial, get feedback in a written form from participants, and assess whether it will work well for the whole school district. In other words, we need to work together as a team. My personal approach would be, when we look at a curriculum or a program, to make sure that I understand it. And if it's not broke, don't fix it.
Rebecca Oliver is our next candidate for this question. What would your personal approach be to promoting and advancing the academic and extracurricular programs offered by the Marshfield School District?
I would like to see the curriculum, as well as the syllabus that teachers use, posted online. With parents' understanding of what is being taught, they can become better allies with the teachers and work together, helping the students learn the information. And if there are differences in ideals that come up, parents can address them with their children to avoid confusion in them. As far as extracurricular activities, I would like to see all kids involved in one or more of them. I think it's important for kids to learn skills outside of the classroom. Some kids are easily drawn to different activities, but others need to be encouraged to get involved. We need to do something like a survey of the interests of those that are not involved to see what their interests lie and where we can develop activities that they would be likely to join. Getting them involved outside of themselves and involved with other people and other activities is a very important learning skill. Realizing that teachers' involvement is always a concern in adding extra activities, depending on the legal aspects that there may be, maybe we can get some parents or community activities to be added to the extracurriculum.
All right, thank you, Rebecca. Dale is next for this question. What would your personal approach be to promoting and advancing the academic and extracurricular programs offered by the Marshfield School District?
I'll use a little bit of my time to make just a comment here that our curriculum is available online. There are a number of things that we could do, and the question is, how would we promote and advance academics? Well, one of the things that I haven't talked to our superintendent or our business person yet about this, maybe it's time to add a communications specialist to the central office or district, because some of that duty right now that people want to see in terms of communication is taken up by a secretary that has about nine other jobs currently. So maybe that would help if we could add something there. I think we need to make sure that the district offers the technology classes at all levels, from AP and technical education course opportunities to strong programs for students with special needs. And sometimes, we kind of forget that group of students that's in the middle. They might not be a typical AP student. They might not be a student with special needs. And sometimes, that middle group of students, I don't want to say gets ignored, but we have so much attention placed to one end or the other of the seesaw that sometimes we need to rethink a little bit and pay a little bit more attention to that situation. I think we have a varied and robust technical education program. I think one of the things we do to promote to kids and to our community, that college isn't the be-all and end-all for everyone, and that we have a shortage of people in many of the trades, in many of what we would call technical-type industries right now. And I think that's something that maybe we have to do even more of. I'm not saying we don't do a good job of it, but more of throughout the whole school. I'd like to see kids, children, students, have a varied approach to developing their education. We're talking here about promoting and advancing academic and extracurricular programs. One of the things I think that students need to understand, that a wide variety of types of classes are important to being a well-rounded person and student. Things in the arts, maybe taking a technical education class or two, an AP class. Now, obviously, there's only so much time these kids can put in their schedule. I've got a comment about extracurricular activities. In my mind, there is no such thing. Any activity that the student involved in here, any club, athletics organization, is co-curricular and should be labeled as such. Things that kids get involved with, the skills program or FBLA, I'm not even sure if they've changed their name at this point, but a lot of the other so-called extracurriculars are extensions of what they learn in the classroom. They are co-curriculars. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. We'll go to Edie Adam next. What would your personal approach be to promoting and advancing the academic and extracurricular programs offered by the Marshfield School District?
Thank you. Let me start by saying that I think our district is doing a very good job educating our kids. I have six kids, and as a parent, I know that every kid is different. And every kid has different needs, and the district needs to be able to educate every student based on their needs. I'm talking about educating the whole person, not just math, science, language arts, but also let's talk about programs like the creative arts, music, dance. They are all very important. We know that when students do take music lessons, their science scores improve. And so let's educate the whole person. Let's have programs that take care of the needs of our special needs students, let those students understand that they have value, and we want them here. We have an inclusive district, and we want them to be here, and we'll give them all the tools they need to feel loved and valued and reach their potential. I want us to be able to improve, I won't say improve, to be able to increase our career and technical programs. We have a very robust career and technical program here, including internships. I want to see it grow, because not all students are college-bound. I know that for a fact, my son is 19, and he's still, he's not in college because he doesn't want to go to college. He thinks college is for suckers. And sometimes, he's right. So we need to be able to have programs for kids like that, who are going to go out of high school and get a job and have, so whilst they're in school, let's expose them to trades, to electrical jobs, to plumbing, to welding, all those trades. And then when they, let them try those skills and see what sticks. I want us to be able to improve our students' soft skills. I'm talking about communication. I'm talking about how to engage the internet. I'm talking about digital citizenship, to be able to grow up in the world and fit in the world that bombasts us so much with information, to be able to tell good from bad information. All that is part of my agenda. Finally, I want to be able, I want us to be able to promote co-curricular activities, including clubs. When I was a student in elementary school, I had a very, very terrible stutter. By joining the debate club, I overcame that. I still have it, but at least now I'm able to have the tools to overcome it. So I'm a big fan of co-curricular activities. Thank you.
Thank you, Edie. All right, our next question, we'll start with Kathy Gorst. And Kathy, cite specific skills that you feel a Marshfield graduate would have upon graduation, and how does this connect to your personal philosophy on education and the mission statement of the Marshfield School District?
Graduating students should be proficient in basic skills like math, reading, and English skills, as well as communication. Communication is very important. They should have acquired and be proficient in basic science skills. There are applied skills that students also acquire in conjunction with various courses in our schools. They should be proficient in the skills taught in those courses. If they have chosen a career path, they should leave school proficient in the specific skills they would need to progress in that career path. skills they would need to progress in that career path. They should understand and have learned their rights and obligations as a citizen. In my legal practice, I have seen some of the disasters that can occur when a young person steps out of high school or is getting ready to graduate and runs into an entanglement that they never foresaw because they didn't understand what their rights and obligations were under both our laws and our constitution. Can have disastrous and devastating effects on them for the rest of their lives. They should leave proficient in critical thinking skills and reasoning, and they need to know how to think. They should have skills needed to be able to manage their finances, select life options that are consistent with their learned and inherent skills, and be able to select positive life options, set realistic goals, understand contractual obligations, and be able to research how to acquire new skills and develop the skills that they already have. They should have developed skills to be able to receive and utilize constructive criticism and provide appropriate feedback to criticism or an evaluation, and they should graduate having an understanding that they are not an expert and may not be proficient in everything, but with the skills to learn from mistakes and move forward, building on that learning. How is that consistent with the mission statement? Working together to nurture excellence in a collaborative, inclusive, and supportive If they have the basic skills and have learned how to apply those skills and have learned how to communicate, I believe that they will be able to fulfill the mission statement. They would learn to work together to nurture excellence, be collaborative, inclusive, and supportive, and be part of their community.
Thank you, Kathy. We'll move to Rebecca Oliver. Cite specific skills that you feel a Marshfield graduate would have upon graduation, and how does this connect to your personal philosophy on education and the mission statement of the Marshfield School District?
Like Kathy mentioned, I think we need to have a strong education in the basics. All kids need to learn how to do math, how to write letters, how to communicate with people. But I think the most important skill that a person needs is the ability to make informed decisions. So many kids coming out of school don't know how to make a decision. You get them in the workforce, and they have to be told every little tiny thing to do because they can't, they just don't seem to be able to make decisions. They need to know how to find the information that they need for these decisions, and the school goes a long way in teaching them that in the basic classes and in other classes. My philosophy is to have a graduate that can support themselves, whether they go on to college or whether they go into the workforce or a trade school, and not have to rely on others to help them make their life choices. They should be able to pull from their education and from their community support system and from research needed to make informed decisions of their own. The school's mission statement, working together to nurture excellence in a collaborative and inclusive and supportive community, goes a long way in helping them develop their own community support system, which so many kids don't have, especially feeling isolated, especially from these last two years, is going to make it difficult for the ones in the next couple of years. We need to help them overcome that.
All right. Thank you. Our next candidate for this question is Dale Yakitis. Dale, cite specific skills that you feel a Marshfield graduate would have upon graduation, and how does this connect to your personal philosophy on education and the mission statement of the Marshfield School District?
I think we've heard some good responses already. One of the things that I've mentioned before that I would like to add is the skills that the students need to leave here with should be based upon a varied education. Unfortunately, due to college enrollment issues and whatever else is going on these days, sometimes students, I think, have a tendency to specialize, and they get into a one-track type situation and maybe don't look outside the track that they're in a little bit to find other things that could be valuable to them. I would like students to leave here with the idea that they have options in terms of their future education, in terms of their employment, in terms of whatever choices they make, in terms of life skills. I think it's important to have an understanding of community involvement, that your education doesn't end when the last school door hits you in the butt on the way out. I think it's important for people to be good community members and get involved, and I congratulate the members up here for all choosing to get involved and to run for school board. I think they need to have a wide variety of skills. Technology use includes the types of things available in technical education, a good idea of varied occupations out there, and appreciation for the arts. I hope they would leave with some sense of financial education. People talk about bookkeeping and checkbooks and stock markets and some of those things. I think they need to have an understanding of health and wellness education, which is becoming very important, or at least emphasized more. Now, it's always been important, but something that we need to pay more attention to, myself included. They need to have good social skills, and that also includes knowing how to use social media effectively. And I think those are some of the key things that I would like to see a graduate have upon graduation. Not only the book knowledge that is necessary possibly to get into a certain college, but also some of the other skills, the social skills and the other types of technical skills that they should have as a good citizen. Thank you.
All right. Edie Adam is next. Cite specific skills that you feel a Marshfield graduate would have upon graduation, and how does this connect to your personal philosophy on education and the mission statement of the Marshfield School District?
Thank you. So I've been thinking about this question, and it dawned on me that technology and the way the world works is rapidly changing at a very fast pace. When I was in college, we had to go to the library and get actual cards to go and get a book from the librarian to bring to the desk to read. You check the book out, read, and take it back to the library, and they give you a different book. And today, my five-year-old daughter can take my phone, type a few things there, and say, "See that? See? That is what I want to watch. I want to watch Puppy Dog Pals." And show me on my computer. And this computer, this phone here is more powerful than all the computers that were in the library when I was in college. That's how technology changes. So what I'm trying to get at is that we need to think beyond just today and tomorrow. Think long term. What we think our kids need today would be obsolete in five years' time. So we need to be thinking about how to make them think. We make our students to be lifelong learners, and they'll be okay. Let them get the bug of how to find information, because if we teach them skills for a trade today, that is well and good, but if they don't know how to find information and to teach themselves in the future, that's not going to help them in the future. The second thing I want to talk about is that we need to teach them about critical thinking skills, to be able to differentiate between what I would call BS and what I would call good information. Today, if you go online right now, there's so much information about everything else, and sometimes our students get confused. So we need to teach them how to think critically so that they can fend for themselves in the future. Of course, we have to also include all those terms that others talked about here, including basic math skills, basic language skills. Those are all very important, but the most important skill that we can teach our kids, in my opinion, is giving them the gift of being lifelong learners. I'm good with time? Okay. So the other thing I want to talk about is the importance of, you just said I have plenty of time. Okay. I'll end by saying that it's important for us to see our kids as future leaders. These young men and women are going to be sitting here in about 15, 20 years' time, and they are going to be the people who are going to determine how we live as 70, 80, 90-year-old people in the future. So if we equip them with the skills they need today, it will serve us and them in the future, and the future of this country depends on them. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Just a reminder, the first hand is 30 seconds, second hand is wrap it up. Okay. You don't want to know what the third hand is. All right. Lana Fettig-Goodwin. Cite specific skills that you feel a Marshfield graduate would have upon graduation, and how does this connect to your personal philosophy on education and the mission statement of the Marshfield School District?
Thank you. So first, I think as we've all said, the basics of reading, writing, and arithmetic, as my grandma used to say to me, is absolutely critical. It is sad to me when I have clients who have graduated from Marshfield who cannot read. That is sad to me. Second, as I've said before, I believe all students should be prepared and ready for college, technical school, or to enter the workforce, whatever they want to do with their lives. And then students should also be challenged, should be challenged over and above that, not just academically, but also socially. We need to bring back social involvement. I think the way kids learn through social interaction, whether it be through dances or other things, is highly important to how they develop in relationships in the future. And I understand that COVID has been, and the fear of COVID has been a bear in this, but we need to bring that back because I think that is highly important for student development. Also, I am grateful for our AP program, our Honors and AP program. I think it's great that students can get college credits in high school. That is awesome. You can get to an associate's degree first second you step foot in college. That is wonderful, and I'm really grateful that our school has that ability, and I'm grateful that that's promoted. I'm disappointed that the numbers are lower for this year than they have been other years. I'd like to see why that is and what's going on with that. I think that needs to be promoted and encouraged. Bottom line, really, I think as all of us have said, we need to ensure that our students have lifelong success. I am passionate about my son and all of the students in Marshfield School District being not only having lifelong learning, but also having that lifelong success so that they can engage in whatever they want to do, and they will be successful in whatever they do. My personal philosophy on education is that students should be protected, encouraged, and engaged in education, and to learn in the way that the student learns best. I think this is another question coming up, but my son learns totally different than the way I learned when I was in school, and that's a challenge for me. But children, students, need to learn, be taught in the way that they learn best, and I know that's a challenge for districts, but we need to focus on that. Marshfield's mission statement, as you've heard before, is working together to nurture excellence in a collaborative, inclusive, and supportive community. I've also seen mission statements that say that the mission statement, the community provides a safe, healthy, and collaborative learning environment that fosters respect and responsibility, empowering all to achieve their maximum potential. That means respecting their self and others, holding and reaching high standards, promoting collaboration in the school community, employing comprehensive approaches to continuous learning, embracing innovative practices, demonstrating responsibility, and ensuring a safe and healthy environment. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Alana. We will move on to our fifth prepared question. We'll start with candidate Rebecca Oliver. How are you going to work to shape the culture of the Marshfield School District moving forward?
I think one of the biggest cultural problems the school has is bullying and the fights that's been going on. I would like to see more being done for the safety of the students in school. I've heard of quite a few girls who won't use the bathrooms unless they go to the varsity bathroom because of safety issues. And I think that's a problem that needs to be addressed immediately. I would like to start a program with the rest of the school board involving parents and community to get more eyes in the hallways of our schools. The teachers do a good job in the classrooms and when they can be out, but outside in the hallways and in the bathrooms, there's not enough adult presence. A liaison officer is here, I know, but he can only be one place at a time. In the schools that have bullying and more of the fighting going on, we need more eyes. They're needed to stop the problems when they first start. There's some, but kids are starting to have an argument, they can let somebody know that somebody needs to come and help deal with that before it escalates into a fight. An adult presence stops a lot of things before they even start. I read of a school down south last year that had a lot of fighting and drugs in their school, and the fathers finally took it upon themselves to form a group, and they all, two or three of them at a time, would take two-hour shifts just walking the halls and checking the bathrooms while classes are going on, to make sure that those students that like to hang out in those places for whatever reasons are moved along to their classes and not allowed just to hang out and cause problems for other students as they come in. And it worked quite well in that school, and I think we need to do something similar. Community and parent involvement would also help to show the students that it's not just school policies, but that these policies, that there would be a lifelong form of respect that they could learn, that the parents are behind what's going on at the school. They don't have just a school life and a home life. We need to learn ways to overcome that and combine the two so that they can have a more cohesive learning environment.
All right. Thank you, Rebecca. Mr. Yakitis, you're up next. How are you going to work to shape the culture of the Marshfield School District moving forward?
Well, I think I've answered some of that already in talking about looking at more ways to possibly open communication. I do want to make a point that there are no secret meetings with school board people. Now, there are some sessions where we have to go in private session because it deals possibly with people's job performance or whatever, but there are no secret meetings. Now, the problem is, most of you are not aware of or not in touch with when some of the committee meetings are being held and when some of the decisions are being made that you are concerned about. And I understand that, and I will work as one board member to try to remedy that, keeping in mind that I am just one member working in a collaborative group of seven board members at this point and possibly in the future. I don't take that for granted. I understand that serving as a board member is a special opportunity given to an individual in this community. How would you shape the culture? Maybe there needs to be also some education programs that go out to parents as well, helping them deal with some of the social media issues, making sure that they keep track a little bit more. Many of the issues that we're having at school regarding fights and other types of intimidation are actually the after-effects of things that happen in social media. And I think you could ask some of the students that down here right now, that that is one of the issues. I will continue to work hard as a school board member if I'm elected to show my passion for education, my concern for students. I taught thousands of students when I was here in this school district. I'm on Facebook. I have hundreds of students that still communicate with me and ask me questions, check in to see how I'm doing, tell me about their family. I think that's all part of the school culture that's everlasting, and sometimes they even ask questions of Mr. Y., and that was my nickname when I was here in the school district. Is that 30 or 60? 30? Thank you. Okay. Actually, I answered a lot of this already in my other questions in terms of improved communication, and I know the district is working very hard right now to deal with safety issues. Some of that at times cannot be discussed because there are open cases with the police department. department, and I also like you to know that they are seeing some of the same issues as police officers and as judges as we are. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. We'll move to Edie Adam. How are you going to work to shape the culture of the Marshfield School District moving forward?
Thank you. So one of the things I want to talk about in this segment is how to improve communication in the district. I believe that one of the things that has, that is causing a lot of confusion is lack of information. I don't think a lot of people understand how the school board works, how decisions are made, what information they had to make those decisions. And part of my agenda going to the school board is to be able to improve the way we communicate and engage our constituent groups. How do we talk to our students? How do we talk to our teachers and staff? How do we talk to parents? How do we talk to the community about the information we have that is helping us make decisions as school board members? That is critical if you're going to change the culture of the district. Second thing I want to talk about is inclusive excellence. We need to engage our students in, I'm sure some of this is being done, but I want to step it up, to be able to talk about an inclusive atmosphere of respect, of differences. Just because somebody is different, either in their color, in their thoughts, in their behavior, in what they wear, doesn't mean they are any less or more than you are. If we institute policies and also training programs for our students and our teachers, and even sometimes the community members on how to relate to each other at a very basic level, it will improve the culture of the district. I see some of these problems we are facing now because, the root cause of those things is because we do not, we do not talk to each other, and we do not value each other, and we do not relate to each other as in common humanity, and I want to improve that. I want to talk about safety. It's been talked about here as part of the problems we are facing in our schools, and sometimes the school board members do not have the power to be able to solve these problems. But we do have the power to change policy on how the process should work, and I want to be able to improve the policies we have to deal with safety issues by involving the community in innovative ways to be able to solve those problems. Finally, I want us to listen to our professional and support staff. They have great ideas. We hire the best teachers, let's listen to them. They have ideas on how to improve the climate in our schools. I read an article from West Virginia that, well, twenty-five years ago, teachers were talking about the opiate crisis, and they didn't listen to them. And today, we have a huge opiate crisis in the country. If you listen to our teachers, they are very worried on what is coming up, on the fight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adam. Next is Alana Fettig-Goodwin. Alana, how are you going to work to shape the culture of the Marshfield School District moving forward?
First, I believe that all students matter, from grade school to middle school to high school. They all matter, and they all need to be listened to and be made successful. We need to return to the fundamentals of educating our children, having safe schools, making sure that teachers who aren't trained aren't made to go into bathrooms and break up fights. We need to empower parents. We need to provide transparency. We need to support our teachers and our staff, giving them the resources they need to excel. We need to promote financial accountability. It is important to know and to be transparent on how our tax dollars are spent. We need to work as quickly as possible to remove the COVID restrictions. Our students' mental health is suffering. It's terrible. There is such an increase in even girls' suicide, suicidal ideations. There are serious concerns. We need to start addressing those concerns. We need to also bring back social activities, I think. Not only did I say that before, but I think that creates an environment and happiness for children and students. Students need to be protected, encouraged, and engaged, learning in the way they learn best. Our students' grades matter. I think A, B, C, D, and F matters to our students. Achievements matter. Character matters. Our children are the next leaders. They must be prepared to become productive members of society and lead our communities practically and effectively. We need transparency and communication between administration, and parents, teachers, and staff, and students. And finally, we need to stop exporting our children to safer, smaller schools, to jobs. There is an opportunity for greatness within our community, and we need to embrace that and bring that into the culture of the school because it will make all of us, all of our community, better. Thank you.
All right, next is Kathy Gorst. How are you going to work to shape the culture of the Marshfield School District moving forward?
Well, I understand the use of the term "culture," but this is an educational environment in our community as the culture. So what we need to do is to move back and get our community back into our school. We need to take our children out of the isolation booths that we put them in and allow them to interact and address the health issues that being in isolation have now created. I don't, we should reimagine anything. We need to look at curriculum and extracurricular programming and make decisions based on facts with input from all shareholders, parents, students, teachers, community, staff. In order to shape the educational environment here, it needs to be safe. We've hit that all the way through tonight, and unfortunately, that's a huge issue. If you don't feel safe, you can't learn. If you don't feel safe, you can't communicate with other people. You don't know what's going to happen when you do. And it's really important for you to be able to feel safe and accepted in the environment that you're in. You need to have a strong self-image. We need to make sure that our students leave here with a self-image that says, "I am who I am, I am important in this world, and I can do anything that I want to because I am who I am." We need to remove the drugs, violence, and other inappropriate behaviors. We need to engage law enforcement and the medical and parental community and the counseling community because we've got some pretty significant counseling issues that have come up and some pretty significant mental health issues that are now hurting our students. We should assess our surveillance and in-person monitoring resources and add to those necessary to maintain the educational environment here free from drugs, violence, and other inappropriate behaviors. Since we are in the digital age, we also need to provide safety in the digital and electronic environment as well. That means securing feedback from students and parents on items and content accessible through the school-issued electronics as well as monitoring the content in addition to the children's personal electronics. In conjunction with that, we should go back, take a look at programming and the curriculum that put us at the top, and rebuild programming curriculum from that base. But we also, and the one final thing I want to say is, we need to listen to and address and find ways to address bullying in person and on the internet because that is a significant issue in this school.
Thank you, Kathy. All right. We've got one more prepared question before we open it up to audience members, and I guess we'll go back to our original order that we started with. So Dale, you'll go first on this one. When you were a student, how did you view your education? And how does that experience shape your platform and vision for students in Marshfield?
Well, when I was a student, we walked to school every day, uphill, downhill, you know, some of those sorts of things, both ways. I would saddle my horse. In all seriousness, I went to a school in Fond du Lac. I went to St. Mary Springs Academy. I had a Catholic education all the way through. I have some pluses and minuses in my mind as to how that served me. One of the things that it did help me with my own education were communication skills. I became a good writer as a result of my education there. As a matter of fact, when I went to UW-Oshkosh, I entered as a business major. Hated it. I'm not very good at math. Why would I do that? I thought my father wanted me to go that route and that he would be proud of me. One day, I had an English professor ask me, "What school are you in?" I says, "Well, I'm heading towards business." And he said, "You're making a mistake." He says, "You're an excellent writer. You would be a good teacher." And, well, here I am at that point. My own personal education, I guess, was strong at home with conservative parents, parents that made me toe the line when I stepped out of line. My personal education revolved around my neighborhood. They talk about it takes a village to raise a child. I'll tell you what, we had quite a village in North Fond du Lac where I grew up. Somebody stepped out of line there, and you knew it in a hurry. So I think some of those things in the past have definitely shaped my education, and I think I've also mentioned a number of things tonight that I feel are very important for our students. A quality education, a good co-curricular program, a varied education, and based upon some of the things I either had advantage of. I didn't have any technical education programs in the school that I went to, and boy, do I regret that. I'm so glad to see that we have that here in our school district, and it's outstanding. And I want to keep promoting that because I think that's a big need in our community right now. So I guess those are some of the ways my education was shaped, and I guess a lot of those things I carry forward in terms of my decision-making in the school district to give our kids a quality education all the way through and a great experience.
All right, thank you, Dale. Edie Adam is our next candidate. When you were a student, how did you view your education? And how does that experience shape your platform and vision for students in Marshfield?
Thank you. So I grew up in Ghana, northern Ghana, in the middle of nowhere. If I showed you a map of the country where I grew up, you couldn't find the village I grew up on the map. And I went to school by accident when a teacher passing by a house said, "This kid needs to go to school," and took me to school by hand. And throughout my education, I was lucky enough to get teachers and counselors and staff who were able to guide me and to shape me by giving me my options and directing me on how to make those choices. But the most important lesson I learned in school, in boarding school in Ghana where I grew up, was that education is the key that can open doors. But for education, I wouldn't be sitting here asking you to vote for me to be on the school board in Marshfield, Wisconsin, for a kid whose parents didn't make a thousand bucks a year. I'm sitting here asking you to vote for me to be on the school board. That is what education does. So for me, being here, my philosophy of education is that it is a key that opens doors for everybody. It doesn't matter who you are, it is the great equalizer. It is the one thing that can change a person's life on a dime. It is the one thing that can lead a kid from the middle of nowhere to be able to say, "I can achieve, I can do," whether to go to college, whether to go to career, whether to go to tech school. It doesn't matter what you want to do, education gives you the key to do that. So my philosophy, personal philosophy in education is that if you, if we want our kids to grow up and be successful, then we need to give them the love of learning. And that is what led me from the middle of nowhere in Ghana, when I left Ghana at the age of twenty-one with a suitcase full of used clothing and twenty-five bucks, and I left the country. And today, I have a PhD, my wife has a PhD, we have six kids, four are done with college, and we have two in school. We own businesses in town, and I can say without education, none of that would be possible. And that's what I want to impart to our kids. Finally, I want to say that it's important for us to tell our kids that when you are in school, think for yourself, think critically, and learn how to think for the future because what we know as parents is nothing compared to what our kids will know in five years and ten years. Trust me, in the last five years, we've had quadruple the amount of information available, and we cannot even imagine what our kids will know in five years or ten years or fifteen years. Education is the key. Thank you.
Thank you, Edie. Alana Fettig-Goodwin is next. When you were a student, how did you view your education? And how does that experience shape your platform and vision for students in Marshfield?
Thank you. I loved school. I loved going to school. I loved to learn. I still love to learn. In fact, I think if you go a day without learning something, something new, then it's just a day wasted. When I was sixteen and in high school, I looked at my options. I thought, "What am I good at and what am I not good at?" I was not good at math. So I thought, "Wow, that kind of cuts out some types of employment." And I thought, "Okay, so I like to write, I like to do things like that, so maybe journalism or maybe law, maybe law school." And I thought, "Well, they say in law school you don't have to do math. They lied, because you do." But I was like, "Oh, okay, journalism, law school. Well, I can write in law school, so maybe I'll just go that way." And at sixteen, I decided, "That's what I want to do. That's what I wanted to do with my life." And I did. And I did some traditional school, I did some virtual school, and it is how I learned how to think. And that is really what shapes my platform and the vision for students in Marshfield, is teaching students how to think, how to think critically, how to think about the world around them, how to take a situation and apply principles to it, whether it be your own principles or whether it be things you learn from others, and apply those. It's also making sure that not only when students have learning styles and methods and needs, but we give them the options to, as I said before, learn in the way that they learn best. We need to make sure that our community is keeping and retaining our students, whether they go off to college to pursue a dream and pursue life, that they can come back. They can come back and start a business here. They can come back and raise a family here, or can stay here and be already engaged in the workforce prior to even leaving school and can have a career, a career that will take them and allow them to be able to raise their own family in their own home and have a future. And so I'm excited to be a candidate for school board. I'm excited to be here, and I really appreciate the opportunity to be able to share how my experience and my life in education and how I did things can make a difference in other people in deciding what you want to do with your future, what you want to do with your life, and being engaged in all sorts of, as I said before, being engaged in all sorts of activities and events and things and extracurricular activities or co-curricular activities or whatever they're called, to be able to just decide what you're passionate about and how you can make others successful. I love making people successful, whether it be my clients, whether it be my staff, my family. That is my goal, and that is what excites me the most. Thank you.
Thank you, Alana. Kathy Gorst is our next candidate for this question. When you were a student, how did you view your education? And how does that experience shape your platform and vision for students in Marshfield?
Well, I would get up in the morning, go out, grab my dinosaur, put the leash on, and head out to school. No, actually not. I'm a little bit different probably than most people. I'm a country mouse. I went to a one-room country school until I was in seventh grade, and then moved to a consolidated school district. In that country school, I had access to eight grades worth of curriculum and learning materials. I was never bored. I was absolutely enthralled. I was encouraged by our teacher to partake of any of the materials that I could learn and understand. and understand. To learn, everyone in that school had to respect the other class's instruction time. We had tutors in the form of older classmates. We all played together in one large playground. Older students looked out for the younger ones. When an immigrant family moved to our community, our entire student body took turns teaching them English. That was very impactful. In the consolidated school that we had, we also had excellent teachers and a good library. However, there wasn't so much personal interaction and the, the students were divided by ages. So there was less tutoring from older students and there was less interaction and there was less of those kinds of, of interactions occurring. When I got to that school, however, I took every math, science and English class that I could squeeze in. I did extracurricular activities like band, orchestra, chorus, cheerleading, participated in the junior and senior class plays, took speech class, did debate. I had teachers and counselors who guided me and showed me what my potential was and what I could achieve. They encouraged me. We had teachers that were so good that the UW over here in Stevens Point had to revise portions of their science, biology and English curriculum due to the number of students that we had in our school that attended thereafter graduation. Their theater arts program came and watched our junior class play as part of their learning experience. Parents could come to the school anytime and see what their children were doing or learning. The open door policy kept us in line because we never knew when we would look up and see dad or mom coming down the hall. What I learned was that nothing was out of reach if you want it. And that's what I want our system, our school here to be for every student from this point going forward. We need to engage.
Thank you, Kathy. Next is Rebecca Oliver. When you were a student, how did you view your education? And how does that experience shape your platform and vision for students in Marshfield?
I went to a Bethel Junior Academy. It's over by Arpen, a church school for the first eight years. We lived, I started out, we lived in the country there for, till I was in third grade, moved to Marshfield and my parents decided to keep us there. In ninth grade, dad said that was enough of that. We were going to a public school. So integrating into the Marshfield School District from a small school, they automatically, when they did up my schedule, they automatically put me in. They had three grade level, you know, levels in each grade, A, B and C. They stuck me in the C classes because they weren't sure where I was at. Being in a one-room school, they weren't sure what to expect. Within two weeks, I was in the A classes because I enjoyed learning, whether it was in the small school or here. I was one of those students that I listened very intently to the teachers and I had excellent teachers. They explained things well enough that I really didn't have to do a lot of extra studying to get to pull B average. I probably could have done better if I had studied, but I was enjoying school. I was enjoying all the friends and all the social activities and all the things that comes with being in a larger school. So I had a good experience in school. I had good support from the teachers and from the staff if I had questions or problems. I was involved in gymnastics and I was involved in the, in a photography club as the extracurricular activities. I wanted to see, I want to see the kids in our district have that same experience, to be able to have the social interactions and the extracurricular things and just the friendships that you can develop with having such a wide variety of students. But amidst, we have such a turbulent world right now. We need more involvement of the parents and the community to be able to navigate the chaos that is currently in our society. So that's what I would like to see is more involvement so that we can keep those, you know, help them navigate the chaos that's just in this world.
All right. Thank you, Rebecca. We have reached the end of our prepared questions. Looks like we have a few of the 20,000-some registered voters in the Marshfield School District with us. So if there are questions, it is your time. There is a microphone over here. I will set a few ground rules that hopefully we can follow. Just keep in mind, this time has been set aside to hear from the candidates, okay? Not from the public. So if you have a question, ask it. While we understand you may need to give some background to set up your question, please try to limit that type of commentary, okay? And so, also, I guess I would ask that if you do have a question, try to target all five candidates and not one or two or three specific candidates. I know that's not always possible, but if there is a question that is aimed at one or two, we will give equal time to all five candidates just so, you know, to address any questions. All right? And they will get the usual three minutes to respond. Question?
I'd like to introduce myself as the class president of the class of 2024, the sophomores in the high school right now. And I'd like to just rather clarify what your plans are to do with the so-called fights going on in the school and the violence and the drugs. With being a student and seeing all this stuff, it's firsthand experience with most of it. And mostly the kids are getting, that are getting involved in this are the kids that we don't see involved in extracurriculars or sports anymore. And there's been a decline in a lot of athletic participation, just participation in clubs in general. And I know we had talked about what your guys' plans are to get people more involved in the school, but I'd just like to kind of know a little more in depth, if anything, with that kind of stuff, so.
Okay. We'll go back to our rotation. Dale, I think, started us off last, on the last question. So we'll start with Edie.
Thank you for the question. There are two things, two decisions in my life that I believe have shaped me. The first one is asking my wife to marry me. That was genius. And the second one was moving to Marshfield. I moved here because it was safe, it was communal and the school district was a crown jewel of the, of the city. I have come to love this city because of all the attributes of what it has to offer. And it saddens me when I see reports of fights and violence and altercations in our schools. And I understand that part of that is because there aren't a lot of outlets for our kids to get out there and intermingle and play and kind of release the energies that they have bottled up. I understand that. So in my opinion, these are temporary situations that will sort themselves out in the long run after the restrictions have, have been taken away and we get back to life as normal. In the meantime, though, we need to have policies and also programs in place to be able to put a damper on those kinds of behaviors, including more teachers and more staff in the common areas to be able to keep an eye on what is going on. As much as possible, I would like to see us bring back volunteers into the school. I understand that it is difficult right now because of COVID restrictions, but if we can have mitigation measures that can allow us to bring to a level just into the school, we have extra pairs of eyes in the common areas, in the classrooms to be able to see what's going on so we can take care of all those things. Another thing we can do is to gradually remove the restrictions based on the evidence we have, like for instance, I was at the school board meeting here yesterday when they decided to make masks optional. And I believe that as time goes on, when they begin to, to loosen the restrictions, the COVID restrictions, it will allow students to get out more, to be able to burn energy more. And by doing that, we are going to see a reduction in the violence and also in the fights going forward. Finally, I want to say that as school board members, we do not, as a matter of policy, we do not get involved in the day-to-day run of the school. We set the broad parameters and the policies and then the school administration and principals and teachers, they carry them out. And I want to see us making the tradition of setting the broad policies and let the, the school staff and administration deal with the day-to-day. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Adam. Alana?
Thank you. First, I am so sorry that you and your fellow students are dealing with this. This is really unconscionable and something needs to happen. And I, I'm just sorry it hasn't already. Students, it, it just seems are out of control. It seems like they're unmanaged and students out of control are really going to require some significant enforcement. Parents are unsure what to do. They can't even come to the school and come into the school and talk to the principal. They, teachers and staff are not trained to break up fights. They're going to get sued. Why would they do that? They can't go into bathrooms and, and break up these, these kids who are vaping and kids who are doing drugs. We need to have liaison officers in the schools. We need to have drug dogs going through and, and sweeping the schools. And it used to be that the drug kids, you knew who the drug kids were. You knew who they were. At least when my stepkids were in school, they knew who the drug kids were. They knew they stayed away from them. They knew they stayed with the good kids. Now, can you even do that anymore? This, this is a crazy situation and something that needs to happen and happen fast to fix this, this situation, or there's really going to be some harm to these kids. It's just sad. And something needs to happen right away. And honestly, why are we focusing on how masks are worn and putting kids in detention for that, in-school suspension? Really? I'm sorry. I don't, that's not okay. That's not okay. We need, we need enforcement. And we need enforcement now.
Could I just speak on something? I'd like to just say that the administration in the high school, I feel like has been doing an amazing job with taking care of the fights and trying to break everything up. And there's a teacher in the building and a, a coach that's had a pretty big influence on me, who always says, culture is everything and the whole culture question. I think in the high school right now, there's just not a really good culture and just trying to bring everyone together is something that we should really try to focus on. I don't think we have bad kids or, or drug problems. It isn't really much of a prison, so I don't see a point in much of, most of that. But I think we have a really good group of kids. It's just some people don't mix the greatest together and it's just a culture issue, if anything.
Thank you for that. Kathy?
Well, you know, my granddaughter said something to me about months and a half ago about the fights. And she said, you know, Grandma, she said, I don't think the freshmen and sophomores coming in had the benefit of being able to mature and mature socially the way that they should have because of all the stuff that went on. And she said, I think they're, they're socially retarded. I mean, it's, it was, it was her way of putting it, but I think she hit the point right on the head. The kids lost two years of interaction. They lost two years of face-to-face. They lost two years of figuring out who was, who, who, who could be a friend, who, who could not be a friend. They, and I'm going to tell you this, okay? Personally, when I went to law school, I was involved in, I was really interested in becoming a prosecutor. So I worked in the Legal Assistance to Inmates program. So I went to the prisons, okay? What you're seeing happen with these kids are what you see when you lock up people in cages. I'm, I'm sorry, that's what happens. We need to open the doors to the cages, let our kids get back to being normal. They need to be having dances. They need to be having parties. They need to be having pizza parties in their classrooms. They need to be doing the stuff that bonds them so that they, that they understand who their friends are, so that they're not turning in desperation to things like drugs or violence, so that they, so that they can develop a good self-image and support it. But until then, in order to keep some of the students, some of our, our students and staff safe, in order to do that, we might have to beef up the liaison officers. There are other things that we can do. We can, we can beef up surveillance. We can have, we could consider doing bathroom monitors so that they're, they're, they don't have the opportunity to vape and do drugs in the bathrooms. I understand that one of the reasons why some of the fighting has occurred is because, oh, somebody ratted me out. I got to go get him. So, you know, we have to take a look at some of what this reasoning is and we have to figure out a solution that's going to work for the students, that's going to work for the teachers, that's going to work for the parents. And we need to be communicating this stuff. We don't need to be hiding the fact that somebody got beat up. We don't need to be hiding the fact that the liaison officer was assaulted. We don't need to be hiding those things. We don't need to pretending, be pretending they didn't occur. People need to know what's happening so that they can address it at home with their children as well as in school with the teachers, staff and administration. That's my position.
All right. Thank you, Kathy. Anything to add?
No.
No. Ms. Oliver?
Yes, I do believe. expression on the other person's face and things escalate quickly from there. So I think having, getting, getting the masks off the kids is going to make a great improvement. The other thing to take care of it, like I said, I elaborated before, the, the program that I would advocate is similar to the Neighborhood Watch Program where you've got people coming in and just helping keep more eyes on what's going on. An officer can only be in one place at a time, but people could be walking the halls while the kids are in classes and in, in otherwise. And they can be communicating with the officer where there's problems starting to occur. They don't have to break it up themselves, no, but they should be able to help the liaison officers to take care of the issues as they come up quicker than, you know, I had my niece's child got hit in that fight, one, two girls were fighting and they were girls that had been bullying her previously. She ended up being close enough and she got hit in that, or, you know, in that altercation too. Not on purpose. They weren't trying to hit her. She was just in the way. So, yeah.
Okay. Anything else to add to the question? Otherwise, we have one more candidate. Mr. Ekitis?
The question is dealing with the violence in school or some of the issues.
Just dealing, not really dealing with the violence, just your position on what has been going on because I don't, just culture and stuff like that.
Well, I know that our administration, because I have constant contact with our superintendent and with other administrators in the school district, I know that they are putting forth the best efforts that they can to deal with the incidents. And here's the key words, when they take place. Here's a question that I'm posing, and maybe this is something that you students could talk to me about later. What do you think the reasons are that these incidents are taking place? It's one thing to be reactive, to have more police officers in the school would be a great idea if it could be afforded. To have parents in bathrooms, that could probably help as well, probably not a bad idea if we can figure out how to vet those people as volunteers. But what's the root cause? Why is this happening right now? Is this systemic? Is this something that's just becoming more frequent in our culture? Are more people less afraid to speak the way they do in public to other people? I guess I'm more concerned to help answer your question or to respond to your question as much as I think before we can actually deal with some of the issues that are taking place is to answer the question, why? Why is this happening? Can we look at the root causes and try to be a little bit more proactive? Is it more parent involvement? Is it something else that can be taught in our classes, in our schools? Is it something the community as a whole can try to help and... Is it something the community as a whole can try to help and respond to? I think the "why" here is very important to get at and to understand that I just think kids are reacting to a lot of things that are going on right now in our society, in our culture. I'm not blaming any of this on anybody in particular, but I am saying I know that our police liaison officer, our school administrators, our principals, is that 60 or 30?
Thirty.
Thank you. Are responding. I know that Judge Cruz, who deals with truancy issues in the community, has brought in. He is seeing the same kind of vile responses in his courtroom, and the police officers are experiencing some of the same things in their duties day-to-day, some of the reactions from adults as well as students in the community. I think we need to look at the "why" in order to try to solve the problem, to get at it and to do something about it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dale.
One more thing. And one thing I think you guys should really consider is the kids that at least I see nowadays is, most of them don't really take well instruction from an authority above them, and just trying to work with, just getting the kids to try to change something among them and just working with the kids and maybe even trying to develop something with the kids working together and holding them accountable for their actions.
Mm-hmm. And where that starts. Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for the question.
Thank you.
Any other audience questions out there?
Hi again, everyone. Thanks again for taking your time again on this night. I know it's run a little bit long. Sort of one question that we kind of missed to talk about, you guys have touched on it a little bit, is over the past few years nationally, there has been a rise in the mental health crisis. This crisis has impacted many teenagers and young adults in our area. How do you plan to build and expand on mental health programs to help students balance between excellence, academic pressure, and social pressure?
Okay. Let's see. We'll go to our next rotation here, which is Alana Fettig. Goodwin is first up for this one.
Yes. Thank you so much. I fully agree with that. There is a mental health crisis, and I think it's only getting worse through COVID and masking and all of the things that have happened through COVID, the social non-interaction. And then unfortunately, we have waiting lists, huge waiting lists for counseling, eight months, even longer sometimes. It is terrible, actually, and I don't know what the budget is for additional staff. I think there needs to be more mental health counseling. I know that we have amazing ones already, but honestly, the load has got to be incredible. It just has to be. And there needs to be more, certainly more education to students about resources that are available. There certainly needs to be more involvement, and there certainly needs to be more counselors. It used to be a stigma on counseling. I know when I was in school, it was like, "Oh, you don't go to counselors. You don't..." I think it is the best thing ever, that you can go and share your thoughts. You can get strategies and tools to be able to help cope with the stressors that are impacting not only as teenagers and, I'm not trying to be terrible here, but just even the hormones that are happening and the fact that your brains are fully forming and really don't form until you're 26 years old, those things that happen, there's a lot that's going on, a lot of pressure, a lot of stress, a lot of overwhelming feelings. And just even the increase in girls with suicide and suicidal ideations, it's just a tragedy, and something needs to happen and something needs to change. So that's what I would do. I would certainly hire more counselors. I think that's absolutely necessary. There's far too long a waiting list.
Okay. Kathy Gorst is next.
Well, I agree that there's a pretty significant crisis going on. Unfortunately, like Ms. Fettig noted, we have a significant lack of counselors. We have, I think, it might even have something to do with people who are actually going to school and training to do these kinds of things. So I'm not sure about that, but right now in this area, we do not have a lot of counseling services. Some of the options that have, I know, worked in the past for initially years ago when we first started working with domestic violence victims, there wasn't significant counseling services available for them. A lot of them couldn't afford the counseling. A lot of them didn't have insurance. So what they did is they started putting groups together to be able to work through some of the problems and issues. And they would work with one counselor, but they would work through it with groups. And maybe that's something we should look at here in the school, is setting up groups where the students can, with the same types of issues, can sit down and maybe work through some of those issues and find some, find tools and resources to be able to work through some of the problems. Unfortunately, you know, the fallout from mental health issues can be anything from suicide to homelessness to prison. And I mean, it's not a pretty picture. And yeah, we do need to try and beef up those services and get better services, especially for the younger members in our community.
All right. Thank you, Kathy. Anything to add?
No.
Okay. Rebecca?
Yeah, I think I agree. I think we need to have maybe, because of the lack of counseling in the area, maybe have classes for all the students, teaching them just coping mechanisms. When they feel down or blue or have these thoughts, teach them things that they can do to lift them out of those times when they're struggling. But I think another thing that we can do is to incorporate back the dances, the activities, the social things that were fun for kids. There's a lot of stress in the world right now. There's a lot of stress on students right now. And a lot of times, they don't understand everything that's going on, which then makes it worse for them than it does for an adult. And they don't have a lot of outlets for fun. And I think the schools need to go back to the activities that promoted togetherness and fun and just the cohesive part of socialization.
All right. Thank you. Dale?
Dealing with the mental health issues and trying to do something to help students, one of the things that we run into as a school district, and in fact, we're probably going to be facing that right now with two of our counselor psychologists who have decided to move closer to home and will be leaving the district, is right now, it's extremely difficult for schools, all schools, to even find school psychologists or people that are going into counseling. It's very, very difficult to fill those positions. Now, does that totally answer your question? What should we be doing? I think if possible, if funding is available, that we try to add as many of the types of positions that would be needed to help students individually with some of their problems. Again, those are paid positions, and funding has to be developed. Now, can we shift some of the funding? Yes, we can, but as soon as we shift funding from one area, that means something has to go in another area and possibly a program that's near and dear to other students or other parents. So that's always a balancing act within a school situation. I think student groups, I think you do have some of that in school here already, kids that are getting together in groups or whatever and discussing some of the issues. Obviously, they need some guidance, and I think everyone right now agrees that mental issues are a huge problem, not only in our schools, but in our county, in our state, country. That's a huge issue that everyone is trying to deal with right now. And I'm not going to sit here and tell you right now that I have the solution or the answer to all of that. It's a very sticky issue. It's a big challenge, but I think we continue to talk as a school board, which we have done on a number of occasions through our committees, what can we do to provide more services for our students? We have hired more counselors or guidance people. We have. But even at that, they're overwhelmed with the number of students that may be coming to them. And it's a very tough issue right now, and I think it's something that whoever is on the school board next, whomever, will have to have even more discussion about. We do now. We do it frequently. And that's an ongoing problem that we'll have to continue to try to address to help you as students. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Edie?
Thank you. So I want to widen the lens a little bit and look at the problem from a wider perspective. So if we go down, drill down to why we have some of these mental health problems, I think we can safely say that part of the problem has been the social isolation and also the fact that there isn't that social interaction in schools and quarantine and all that stuff has led to some mental health issues. I guarantee, I give you that. And I think as the masking and quarantine and also COVID restrictions are gradually removed, we will have a lessening of the mental health crisis. Now, having said that, it would be good for our students to be able to access mental health counseling outside the school system, because we know that our school psychologists and counselors are overwhelmed. But we have issues of insurance, and it's difficult for students and their parents to get mental health counseling and mental health issues addressed outside the school district because of insurance issues. So this is a much more complex problem than we can solve right now. However, we can have certain programs in place right now to be able to mitigate the problems as we see progress in the future. One of them would be to provide support in schools in the form of clubs and also information to destigmatize mental health, so students understand that mental health is like, is just like any other health problem. It's like diabetes. You don't hide diabetes because there's a stigmatized threat. It's your health. So mental health should be the same way, where students are encouraged to seek help if they need it. We also need to provide outlets where students are able to report issues like bullying in person or social media. These have implications for mental health problems. When we are seeing an increase in bullying online, where it is taken from the physical environment to the online environment, and students sometimes internalize these bullying traits, and it comes out in the form of mental health problems. And so we need to teach our students and the community how to be able to interface with online social media. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Shaw? Have a question?
Yes. Sorry. So as a student at Marshfield High School, it often seems as though parents and teachers are the first to comment on potential issues within school environments. So my question for you is, how would you be willing to communicate directly with students to fully understand the needs of people who are truly impacted by school board decisions?
All right. We'll continue with our rotation. It looks like Kathy Gorst is first for this one. Kathy?
Can I ask you to repeat the question, because I'm not sure if I heard the whole thing?
Yeah. Same here.
Step right up to that microphone nice and loud, Gorst. Thank you.
So as a student at Marshfield High School, it often seems as though parents and teachers are the first to comment on potential issues within school environments. So my question for you is, how would you be willing to communicate directly with students to fully understand the needs of people who are truly impacted by school board decisions?
Well, I think that probably, it was mentioned here, that public forums and possibly even, you know, a public forum with the students, where the students would be able to meet with the school board and through either their student council or in an assembly or in some fashion like that, or that each class would send a representative, or kids with problems would ask to be able to address the school board in that forum and say what they see as problems. Public forum for the parents is good. A public forum for the community is good. So why wouldn't a public forum for the students be good? I mean, that would be one option. The other option would be, like I said, you know, I was, I indicated that I was going to, you know, be interested in going and visiting classrooms and things like that, which would give you access to the school board members and be able to address an issue that you had then.
Okay. Thank you. Rebecca?
Yeah, I would like to see, like, maybe an online site that students could comment about anything and have those comments read at the board meetings, because a lot of times kids aren't able to get to the board meeting. Some of them are during the day and other times. But I think students' concerns need to be heard by the board. And if you've got a problem or you enjoy something that they decided, you would be able to comment, and we would be able to find out what those comments are and have and understand where you're coming from as well.
Okay. Thank you. Dale?
Could you repeat the question one more time so I get it exactly as you want it?
Sure. Okay. So the last part of my question is, how would you be willing to communicate directly with students to fully understand the needs of people who are truly impacted by school board decisions?
Mm-hmm. How do we learn to communicate? We're back to that same issue again that we've talked before, not only with students but with adults, to try to work on communications throughout the district. I will admit to you that being on the school board for the last two terms for six years has been quite a learning experience for me. And I've learned a lot of new things this year, and one of the things that seems to be emphasized is communication. And yes, we have to find a way to talk more to some of the students in the district. The question I asked before, for example, is why do students feel that some of the types of violence issues or fighting issues are taking place in school? So maybe some school board members could be invited to student council and to listen to you there. Maybe there could be some after-school forums where some school board members, if available, knowing that they also, many of them have full-time jobs, could come to try to help you there. I was always a teacher that, I don't know if any of you had me in school or were around when I was a teacher here, probably not eons ago. We had Room 16, which was a journalism room, and I had kids all day long coming in to talk to other students, talk to me about some of the issues that they were having. And that was a good source of communication. And at times, I was able to go to administration or to bring some of those issues up to some of the other adults that might be able to help along those lines. I don't know if we have a room or something in school dedicated to that kind of a situation that kids can go through throughout the day. Yes, they can try to get in to see counselors who are very busy and stuff. I think one of the things that helps a lot is, you all know that you have teachers that you can go to when you have issues, and hopefully those teachers are trying to help you or at least turn you to the right paths of communication or help when you have various issues. So I sympathize with you in terms of trying to deal with the communication between the board and decisions that they make. Sometimes that does bypass kids, and maybe we need to do a better job overall in trying to work through that. I know at one time in one of the boards, we did actually have, is that 60?
Fifteen now.
Okay. I'm done. We used to have kids on the board. Go ahead.
All right. Thank you, Dale. Edie, your thoughts on communicating directly with students and parents to understand the needs of those directly impacted by school board decisions? Did I get that right?
It's mostly just, I think, because parents and teachers are often the first to be questioned more with students and how you would respond to students' needs.
Okay.
Thank you. One of my proudest moments as a professor and also as an administrator in education was spending time with students in venues that was more conducive to students being more spontaneous and sharing their ideas. So for instance, I took the time to go and meet students in the cafeteria, in the common areas, also in playgrounds during games, home games, in the classrooms, anywhere I can find students and engage with them in talking about issues that are important to them. As a board member, I promise you this, I'll make myself available to students in various forums to be able to talk with me and share their ideas and their concerns with me, and I will take their concerns back to the school board. One of the issues that I have felt, and some parents have talked to me about this, is an information vacuum. I know that the district has a lot of information online on the district site, but most people don't access that information. So I want to make myself available to students, especially in venues like this and also in the various schools, and talk with them and have conversations, informal conversations, where we can share ideas and listen to them, actually listen to them, because sometimes we treat students as, their views as unimportant because they are not mature and therefore they don't have, their voices don't count. But that's a big mistake. If we listen to our students, actually listen to them, we will get to see that they have very good ideas and they have some concerns that we should be able, we should be listening to and taking care of. I want to also have the board as a whole have sessions with students from time to time, either once a semester or a quarter, in various forums where students can come to us informally. It's not necessarily at a board meeting, but sometime maybe in the high school here or maybe in the middle school or somewhere, where students can come and voice their concerns to us directly without an interface between us and them. And these are areas where we can work with students, hear their concerns, and work towards solving those problems for the students. Because after all, we are here because of them. If it weren't for the students, there's nothing for a school district. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Lana?
Thank you. First, I love that students have asked the questions tonight. Thank you so much for being involved and engaged in your school. Second, my goal, and certainly in running for school board, is to make students successful. I want to hear from students. You know that old comment box that we used to have? Older people understand the old comment box. It used to be on the wall. Why not an electronic comment box? Like, there's technology now. There's Snapchat. Honestly, I thought I would be one of those parents. So when I was in high school, I thought I'd be, when I get to be my mom's age, I'll never not know what current technology there is. Oh, my goodness, there's so much. I have no idea half of what it is. But I am willing to learn. And I am willing to find out whatever technology opportunity works best for students. I want them to comment, and I want those comments to be read at the school board. I want that to be an integral part because not only does the school board make decisions that impact the students, but then that impact has ripples of effect. And that needs to be taken seriously and taken to make you guys effective and successful leaders in our communities. Because that's what you're going to be, and that's what you are. And I love that the student council is here. So not only can we hear from class presidents, like, thank you, sir, for bringing up the issues about fighting and violence and drugs, and the student council for asking these great questions that we could answer. That needs to happen, but also I think we need to see a comment board.
Okay, thank you. Your question?
Thank you.
And thank you.
Go ahead.
Hi there. Whoa, sorry. All right. So my name is Ace Lee, and I'm a sophomore. My question is kind of broad, but I, not really, I guess. I don't know. It's a lot. But what will you do on the board to support and de-stigmatize the minority groups within the school? This includes, but is not limited to LGBTQ students, the non-white students, and the neurodivergent students, for example, kids on the autism spectrum, and those with other developmental conditions. I know Mr. Adams specifically talked a little bit about this during question five, and some others have touched a bit on it as well, but I'd like to specifically talk about the targeted harassment and discrimination between the students inside of the building, and even some, though few, of the teachers inside of the building.
I think I heard most of that. I, I want to make sure that there's no discrimination between anybody. No, there should be no division, no matter what you believe, what you think, what color your skin, whether you come from this country or another country. All these issues fall into racial discrimination of one sort or another, and I believe that is totally wrong. If that's the problem going on with the fighting and, you know, if that's the underlying problem going on, then those issues need to be addressed, whether it's through education or maybe some form of discipline for those that are doing the bullying for that. Sometimes it's just a matter of a forum of people talking and understanding where the others coming from. Like I said, when one group can understand the other group, they may not agree with them because we don't have to. Everybody agree. But if we understand each other, sometimes we find common ground that we can repair breaches and eliminate some of that. Was that an answer?
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Okay. Dale?
Well, tonight, many of us are making some very broad statements at times, with saying things like, I want to make sure there is no discrimination. The tough thing is then, okay, what is your solution to that? More education within the schools, potential classes that deal with that sort of thing? We live in a society right now that is very volatile. We're seeing this throughout our country right now for whatever reason. And I don't want to sit here and blame everything on politics or some of those types of agendas. I just, I don't want to go there, but the fact remains, those are some things that are happening, not just in your school here potentially, but they're happening countrywide right now. I don't know where our respect for people has gone to a certain extent. I, for one, am in full support of us having a diverse population in our school as we possibly can, whether we're talking about LGBTQ, if we're talking about race issues, if we're talking about transgender issues, if we're talking about culture issues. I think those sorts of things added to a school and a community build a stronger school and a community, and that's how I feel. It's something that I think our school administration, the school board, has to look at in some of our committee meetings, noting that most of what we do comes out of committee, has to look at and address further. Because just hearing you tonight up here, I'm aware of your concern, and I know that it's a concern among many students. So I will make a broad statement, like I've accused some people of already doing. We have to do a better job. And how do we do that? We have to dig in as a school board in our committees, adding things like that to our agendas, and having specific discussions in those committee meetings and agendas about those items. What are we going to do about some of those concerns that students have and our community has? Good question, and it really needs to be worked on.
Thank you.
Mr. Adams?
Thank you for the question. We live in interesting times right now, and there used to be an undercurrent of what was not said in polite society. But today, the environment has made it so okay to speak the silent part loud, aloud. We have emboldened people to be able to say things that were said quietly behind closed doors, to say it publicly and be proud of it. And that is the environment we live now, and that is being brought into our schools. And I don't think it is any one person's fault. It is the culture we live in today, where things are magnified. And like I said, what used to be said behind closed doors and couldn't be said in polite society is now being said aloud, and people are cheering for it. What can we do as a school board? We need to be able to bring about policies and also programs and training that would teach our students about inclusive excellence. And by that I mean to be able to expose our students to the issues of diversity and to say that we have more in common than we have that divides us. I guarantee you, if we put 10 of us together on this stage and list off a certain number of characteristics, we'll find that we have more in common. So for instance, the gay student may have more in common with a conservative Christian than they thought they had. And so if we talk to each other and train ourselves in inclusive excellence and seeing the humanity in ourselves, I believe we'll begin to make progress in these areas. When I was in the UW, I was one of the trainers of trainees. In other words, I was a certified trainer of inclusive excellence. Where we brought together teachers and sometimes students from all 22 counties in the state in groups of 24 to 40, and then we did a four-day workshop by exposing them to issues of discrimination, of racism, homophobia, of ableism, of cisgenderism, and all those other isms. And at the end, people left. The first day was kind of, was a little bit tough because people were kind of defensive. But when we peeled away the layers, by the fourth day, they understood that as human beings, we have a lot more in common than we thought, we thought we had. And so what I want to do as a school board member is to be able to expose our students to issues of difference and why that matters, and why it's important to see somebody's humanity rather than their physical or other characteristics that you might assign to them. Thank you for the question.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alana?
Thank you. So the school, I know, has an anti-bullying policy. Whether that's enforced or not, I don't know. I know they have one because I've dealt with it with students. Some of these issues certainly start at home. They follow to school. Parents need to be involved. We need enforcement of the anti-bullying policies. We need enforcement of anti-arrestment. Really, we need to, kids are mean. They are. And that's not good. I'm not saying it is. And hurting people hurt people. We need to ensure that students understand, and there really needs to be a cultural shift, that there is acceptance of others, and that we have an equal opportunity, equally protected under the law, not denied an opportunity to achieve or succeed because of some immutable characteristic. That includes autism. Absolutely. Kids around the autism spectrum, smart kids. And that needs to be encouraged. And we need to ensure that kids who are, who feel they're different, who maybe feel they're being bullied, that that perception is their reality, and we need to correct those problems and enforce the policies that are already in place. Let's do that. Kids should not be feeling that way. Kids should not be feeling suicidal or having more mental health concerns because they're being harassed or discriminated against because of characteristics that they can't change about themselves. It's not okay. So thank you for your strength in asking those questions.
Thank you.
I think Mike's just been bullied.
Sorry, Mike.
I think our time is up. Go ahead.
It's a difficult issue. It's one that we have looked at and tried to address probably in humanity for centuries, and it still exists. However, one of the things that we can do is implement policies where intolerance is not tolerated, where, but in doing so, we have to also be able to bring both students together and let them find out what they have in common and that, and emphasize that differences are okay. If we were all the same, it'd be a really boring world. It would be, if we were all the same, there would be, it, you wouldn't, there would be no growth. Growth comes from being different. Growth comes from going in different directions. Growth comes from understanding who you are. And I think some of the programming that we should look at is reinforcing the, our student self-image as part of the program, but also allowing students to, and again, this goes back to counseling, be in groups where they can say, you know, you said this to me, and you don't understand who I am. This is who I am. I think we, the minute that we hear something bad, we immediately shut our mind. The minute that somebody thinks something bad, they've immediately shut their mind. And without being able to communicate back and forth in terms of, you know, that was hurtful, you said it to me, why would you think that about me? I'm this, I'm this, I'm this, I'm this, in addition to this. And you're this, and this, and this, in addition to this. So why, why would you think that this one difference makes me not okay? And I will tell you this, there are things that we need to address in the community because we have some of those same thoughts in the community. And it starts with parents sometimes. So I'm thinking that probably more direct interaction is a better answer than, you know, giving everybody a class. Sorry. But I think direct interaction is important.
Thank you. Thank you for also, like, being here tonight and answering questions. I think everyone appreciates it a lot. So thank you.
Well, thank you for asking the tough questions.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. Question?
First of all, thank you for-
Yeah, last question.
Yeah, go ahead. First of all, thank you for taking your time and consideration and thinking about our lives as students. I think it's really nice. My question is regard to the significant learning curve, which was caused by the school lockdown in 2020. If something like that were to happen again, what new policies would be put in place to prevent such a significant curve from affecting us as students?
Okay, let's see. Dale?
Me?
Yep.
The learning curve. It was a very unfortunate thing that we had to go to virtual school, virtual classes. It's also a very unfortunate thing that we as a society and the world have had to deal with something that we haven't dealt with before, COVID, in trying to find solutions to problems that sometimes seem to change every single day. Policies have changed. Policies at the state and local level, policies by school boards change, and sometimes they seem like they change on a whim. But I think everybody is reacting to situations the best they can in the environment. Now, if something like this were to happen again, oh, God forbid, the chances are that there will be some other variant or some other thing that comes up that will necessitate dealing with some sort of an alternative education environment. I think we've learned how to deal with some of that in terms of how virtual learning was addressed. I think there will be changes there. I think there will be discussion, not only among our board- I think there will be discussion, not only among our board, but I know our administrator contacts superintendents from around the state on a weekly level, and they have conversations as to how they are dealing with some of those types of issues. We're living in an environment right now where the traditional delivery of school education is changing. It's changing in many ways, and it needs to continue to change, both through technology, through better training for our staff and teachers. The school day, I know that's already been adjusted here. And so I know that there are a number of things that continue to have to be looked at along those lines. And probably, we get through a situation where something else comes up, and we will try to address those sorts of things as they come up based upon our previous experiences and doing our best to try to improve upon what we did before. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Edie?
Thank you for the question. I'm going to start by saying that as a school board, we need to plan for the worst and hope for the best. I'm a very big fan of evidence-based decision-making. What that means is that we take as much information as we can and try to make the best decision we can based on information we have. I understand that the pandemic was new, nothing we had ever seen before, and nobody in our lifetime had ever dealt with anything like that. I guarantee you that teachers were in a very tough spot. I challenge anyone to be able to convert their curriculum and deliver it online or within a week. As a former teacher, I'm telling you, it is not an easy thing to do. And I have over 25 years of teaching experience, and I can tell you it's not easy to do. Our teachers did the best they could with the tools they had. So here are some of my solutions or my proposals. One, we need to provide more professional development for our teachers to be able to have the tools that are prepared for the worst that may come, but we hope it doesn't, but we prepare for it. Have metrics that we are going to use to make decisions. So for instance, we can say if X happens, then these are the possible solutions we are going to put in place. So for instance, we can say if we have a new variant that is so violent and so dangerous that the death toll is going to climb up, then we need to have strategies in place to be able to deal with that. First thing we have to do is to say we have to prioritize what we want as a school board. We want in-person instruction, if possible. The second best thing is if it is not possible to have in-person instruction, then how best can we structure online instruction to be able to give our students the best shot at not falling behind? So let me repeat that. Our first option in all this is to provide the environment for in-person instruction, where our students will go to class and learn. But in doing that, we need to make sure that we are balancing the need for in-person instruction and the need for safety, not just for our students, but also for our teachers and the support staff who go into the buildings every day and risk their lives. And we need to put in place measures that will make sure that those teachers are as safe as our students. And lastly, I will say that we hope nothing happens again that is going to put us back into lockdown and online instruction. But if that happens, our teachers are better prepared this time to deal with it going forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alana?
Thank you. First, we need to stop being ruled by fear and being afraid of what might happen. Second, certainly, there has been a horrific learning curve that two weeks to stop the spread has now become two years. That's not okay for students. And when we look back at some of the studies, the lockdown had like a 2% positive rating. And that's evidence. So... And again, and finally, it becomes political. And that's not okay for our students either when we divide lines based upon our politics. So not only do I agree that we need to have plans in place to prevent this, but we really should have. We should have had a plan in place. If something happens, this is what we will do, not be scrambling to have an answer and really harming our students in their future. It's really terrible. And so obviously, I haven't been part of the school board to know what policies or plans they have in place, but from what rolled out, it was clear that there was no plan and that there was nothing unfortunately good that happened. My child was essentially out of school for the last months of the year that the pandemic started. That didn't help his education. It certainly didn't help his education coming forward in the next years. I'm grateful that some of the policies that have been passed have allowed students to catch up some. But again, even though the loss of AP students is clear that there is a huge gap, and that huge gap has to be addressed, and it has to be addressed quickly. I don't think we should lower our standards. I think we should increase our standards. As far as how exactly to do that, I'm sorry, I don't have an answer, but I think it has to happen, and I think it has to happen quickly. And it has to be addressed by the school board, and it should be addressed in every single school board meeting.
All right, thank you. Kathy?
Well, I think when we're addressing this particular issue, we need to look at all the facts and figure out who is most significantly affected and who is not. In this particular pandemic, there were a lot of... There was a lot of factual information that was provided that was discounted because it wasn't the right science. And unfortunately, I think our kids suffered for it. They were the least vulnerable. And I think that instead of focusing on the people who were most vulnerable and making sure we protected them, we literally locked down our kids. And it was inappropriate, and it should never have happened. However, that being said, you know, there are things that can happen that we can't foresee. One of the things we... And even in normal circumstances, when there isn't a pandemic, when a child has a sickness, they should have the option of being able to stay home, interact with their classmates, interact, go to school, attend school virtually, and actually interact with the teacher, their classmates, do questions. And we need to focus on developing those types of systems right now. Because one way to keep kids from spreading illnesses like the flu, like RSV, which is can be a pretty significant illness among kids, and other types of diseases that are that more significantly impact kids, where we do want them to stay away from the other children and not spread it, is to be able to allow them to interact with their schoolmates, to be able to interact with their teachers, to be able to continue in the same learning environment and do so in a manner that doesn't impact their learning. So instead of waiting till something happens, we should be working on getting it developed now, implementing it now, and doing it for students, even, well, even for kids that have behavioral issues in school and they get suspended for two or three days. They shouldn't be excused from attending school. They should be attending school in the classroom, online, and learning. And that's what I think we need to look at and focus on. And it may require, you know, some research by the board and additional steps and maybe some additional expense. So those are things we need to look at.
All right, Rebecca?
Yes, I agree. The whole country reacted from fear. There was a lot of fear involved because we didn't understand it and didn't know it. So people put things in place, you know, that follow this and follow this and follow this, and it'll keep your kids safe. And because everybody is interested in protecting their kids, the kids ended up with the brunt of the restrictions and kept them on the longest and all of that because we want to protect our kids. I agree with Kathy totally. We need to have something in place. We need to have... I know talking to the Rural Virtual Academy personnel through the Tea Party meeting, they had a meeting, we talked to them. It takes a teacher about a year to get up to speed on how to teach effectively online. And that is something that needs to be done now before something else happens because it was a disaster for the teachers. It was extremely hard for them as well as the students. And it's going to take pre-planning to learn and put together a program. And I do agree that kids who are ill, if they stay home and not miss school, if they can stay home and not miss school, it'll protect the whole student body much better than we have in the past. And I agree too that kids that are suspended should still have to do classwork because to a lot of them, it's a vacation. They don't mind getting suspended for some of, you know, some of their attitudes are, you know, I'm out of here, I can have fun. So that would be my answer. As a school board, needs to look at funding to be able to train the teachers to handle virtual and classwork at the same time.
Okay, thank you for the question.
Thank you.
All right, now we're going to go into the closing statement portion of our forum. We'll continue with the rotation we've been on. So Edie, we'll start off with you. You have three minutes to give us a closing statement.
Thank you. Well, thank you to the Student Council for putting this event on. I very much appreciate it. I can tell you that all of us here have the best interests of students and the school board at heart, of that I have no doubt. What we differ on is the approach. Here's what I tell you about myself. I'm a parent. I am an educator. I'm a scientist. I have lived on three continents. I have experience in education. I know how education works. I know the conditions that have to be put in place to make education flourish. I love this city. This is my adopted home since 2003, and I've come to love this place more than anywhere else. And I want to see this place continue to thrive. I'm a businessman. My wife and I own businesses in town, and we call this place our home. And the school district is, like I said earlier, on the crown jewel of this community. And if you want to change the future of a society, begin with the kids in the schools. And I believe that I have the tools and the background, and I believe I have the drive to be able to join the school board and bring a different perspective than what you would typically get from somebody else running for the school board. I believe in evidence-based decision-making, where we take the best information and look at it through the lens of what is best for our students, for our professional staff and support staff, for parents, and also for the community. And I believe that if I were to be put on the school board, I will work my butt off to be able to gain your trust by engaging the community, all our constituent groups, in fruitful discussions about the issues that are important to you and I as a parent. I come to you first as a parent and second as an educator. And I believe that if we work together, there's no problem that is too big to solve. The willingness to be able to jump into the fray is what has led me here. And I come to you asking for your vote because I think that we can work together to solve those problems that we all see as important. And what is important for me is to see our school district expand offerings and cater to the needs of all students of all backgrounds so that they can all thrive and become citizens, better citizens going forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Edie. Alana is up next.
Thank you, Student Council, for asking and preparing tough and insightful questions. And thank you, students, for asking tough and insightful and even courageous questions. Thank you. As I've said throughout our discussion, we need to return to fundamentals of educating. We need to have safe schools. We need to empower parents. We need to provide transparency. We need to ensure that our students are successful. We need to instruct our students not just what to think, but how to think. We need to prepare our students to be ready for college, technical school, and to enter the workforce. We need to provide opportunities for our students to get involved in the workforce. And we have those opportunities in our community. All of our students should be protected, encouraged, and engaged in education and learn in the way that each student learns best. And finally, we need to support teachers and staff by giving them the resources they need to excel. I believe that I could do that on the school board, and I am asking for your vote for school board in the primary, which is coming up on February 15th, and in the general election on April 5th. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Alana. Kathy Gorst is our next candidate with her closing statement.
I was really pleased to see the quality of the student participation here and the interest that you have in having an excellent and insightful school and a safe environment. I think I will do an excellent job on the school board. I listen well. That was one of the things that in practicing law, I developed a lot of skills in listening, problem-solving, figuring things out, researching. So I know how to do those things. I'm intelligent. I can learn. Anybody that's starting new on the school board has got a learning curve regardless of what their prior experience is. I think we need to return to the fundamentals that support superior development of competitive skills in math, sciences, English, critical thinking, and communication, as well as applied skills that will address the individual needs of each student. Each student is unique. All children need a safe and healthy learning environment. All teachers need a safe and healthy work environment. We need to learn to return to the full-time in-school instruction, but continue to provide remote learning options like those that I had expressed previously. Children need critical thinking skills that they can apply to meet their needs and goals and to continue to develop as adults and good citizens. Discrimination, and I will say this, and I believe it fully with my heart, discrimination, including racism, is wrong regardless of who practices it. And we should call it out. When it occurs, we should call it out, and there should be consequences for that type of behavior. I believe in equality. I don't believe in equity. We're not all the same, but we should have equal opportunity to pursue our goals and our dreams. I believe in options for parents and students and not mandates. I think that parents and students know best what their needs and what their weaknesses might be. We need to empower parents and involve them in our schools at every opportunity. We need transparency and open communication. Our children's physical development and mental health is suffering, and we've seen questions from the students that actually express that today. We need funding that benefits our students, and we need an environment that protects, encourages, engages children, and allows them to compete and learn from both winning and losing. I'm looking for your vote. I will do an excellent job for you, and I have the best interests of every child in this school at heart. Please vote.
Great, thank you, Kathy. Rebecca Oliver is our next candidate with her closing statement. Rebecca?
As you can notice from my answers, I don't write well. But my strengths are is that I usually get to the point of a problem. I raised eight kids, stay-home parent with them, and I learned very quickly that you need to deal with the problem quickly, and you need to deal with the problem without a lot of talk and, you know, just... a lot of talk, and, you know, just get right to the point and deal with the issues. That's kind of how I tried to answer, that's kind of how I pursue things. On the school board, I would be someone that would be quickly looking to solve problems and just, just get to the point of what needs to be done, come up with a program and, and with the other people as well, and, and start implementing it as soon as is possible. I'm looking for your votes, and I guess that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Our fifth and final candidate for a closing statement is Dale Yakides.
Last but not least, huh? Again, my number one reason for running is I still have a passion for education and a passion for what's happening with our children and in our schools. It is critical that we provide kids with the skills needed to be good citizens, to be lifelong learners, and it's critical also that we have a safe environment in our schools. As a potential continuing board member, I pledge to you that I will work hard as best I can as one of seven board members, as I always have, to try to make that happen. I decided to run again because these are challenging times, and I think it's very important to have a person with my experience on the board to help sort out solutions to those challenges. Some will say maybe I'm too old, I'm over the hill, I'm not concerned, I guess, about some of the feelings of parents and of students, and that's not true. That's, that's not true at all. Finally, some say that those without children currently on the Marshfield School should not be on the board. My response to that, what ain't my way, is that I have devoted almost my entire life to the kids and parents in this district. Nothing has changed, nothing will change. I still consider every student who walks the halls in our schools to be at the forefront of what I do on the board. Every child in our school deserves, our schools deserves access to a great education. My goal as a board member has always been and will continue to be, make sure that that continues to happen. I would also like to add that on the communication issue, that is something that I have learned throughout this last year in particular, that there is a need for more of that, and I think I've addressed some of that tonight in giving you specific ways in which I would try to make that happen. And I, I pledge to you that I will work hard to see what changes can be made along those lines. I would also like to say though, that communication is a two-way street. Since I've been on the board, that's six years, I have received, is that it?
Thirty.
Thirty. I have received maybe 10 phone calls, period. Half of those were when the teachers' benefits were going to change, and there were a number of teachers that were not real happy with me, and even though I voted for some of the changes that had to be made. Three of those came from a gentleman that calls me at 11:30 at night because he says he works during the day, and I'm elected official, so he can call me anytime he wants. And let's just say, education is a two-way street. I'm always available to talk to you. Call me anytime. Maybe not 11:30 at night, though, please.
Thank you, Dale. I'll, I'll stop doing that.
Darn it, Mike.
All right. Well, thank you, candidates. Those are your school board candidates. This is a rare opportunity. This is our first school board primary in, well, six years. We haven't had one since 2016. So it's your opportunity to narrow the field from five to four on primary election day on Tuesday. And the four top vote-getters advance to the spring election on April 5th. Our candidates again are Dale Yakides, Edie Adam, Alana Fettig-Goodwin, Kathy Gorst, and Rebecca Oliver. Thank you for participating. Thanks to the outstanding MHS Student Council for organizing this and the questions and everything, appreciate that. Thanks to Mr. Preston Jeanette and his helpers and staff, I guess, for helping out with the audio and setting this up. Thanks to Marshfield Broadcasting for filming and rebroadcasting this, Channel 989 replay or YouTube, mfldTV.com, so you can go check it out before election day or even beyond the primary ahead of the spring election on April 5th. Thank you for your time, and get out there and vote on Tuesday, February 15th, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you.